This thing's been in here forever.
Run.
I wouldn't.
Run.
Call the Board of Aldermen meeting order for the city of Warrenton for April 1, 2014. Would everyone stand and Alderman Cornell will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes, executive session minutes from March 4, 2014.
I make a motion to approve the executive minutes as presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the executive session minutes from March 4, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item 3B, work session minutes from March 18, 2014 regarding flex time.
Make a motion to approve the work session minutes from March 18, 2014 regarding flex time.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Kesslerly to approve the work session minutes from March 18, 2014 regarding flex time.
Yeah, I have a correction or change if I can refine.
Sure.
I think one of the things that was talked about in the comments of the minutes, we, I think Karen brought up that this be an eight-hour, one timeframe shot. So we talked about increasing the maximum and doing one hour, or eight hours at a time. And the minutes don't really reflect that. The comment is said that when it says at the bottom it was agreed that we would go to 60 hours, it didn't also say that it was a eight-hour max. If I can find these minutes. Yeah, it just says after much discussion, most of the board agreed to start with the proposal with the revised change to 60 hours annually and review it. But that, I thought it was an understanding that we were also gonna do the eight hours per occasion max, too. That's not reflected.
Well, it does say that in there, doesn't it? It says maximum amount of hours per occurrence viewed.
Well, it said Karen also agreed, but it didn't say the board agreed. The last sentence, most of the board agreed.
The board reviewed the group's.
We all agree. So I guess if Karen agrees, that's good enough?
Yep.
All right. I just don't think the board reflected.
No, I agree, we need to make that change.
It needs to be more clear that the board agreed to that also.
The board didn't all agree.
It says most of the board.
It says the board reviewed.
See what happens when I'm gone?
Alderperson Kesslerly also agreed with the increase of annual hours with a maximum of eight per occurrence. But it didn't say that that was agreed to by the board. So I mean, there should be a comment after that that says the majority of the board agreed with that statement.
So is that, is that an issue with anyone that we can correct that and add to? Everybody fine with that? Okay.
Got it.
So we need, we need to approve the work session minutes with the changes. Is that R A U, Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Okay. I need a second on that.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Kesslerly to approve the work session minutes from March 18, 2014 regarding flex times with the corrections in addition. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Stay and I was absent.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one extension. Item 3C, open an executive session minutes from March 18, 2014.
Make a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes from March 18, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the open and executive session minutes from March 18, 2014. Any corrections or additions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. At this time, on the agenda, we always invite the public to come forward and address the board on any issues they might wanna discuss. We ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name, and we allow five minutes for your presentation. So if anyone would like to address the board, please do so at this time. Not hearing from anyone from the public, we'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen. If they wanna address the public and make any comments, do so at this time. I think we'll start down on, with Alderman Clark.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Alderman Ock?
Yeah, I think, I'd like to thank the 10 voters in the taxing district who took the time to vote. We always talk about how many people show up and vote, but these people had to get a ballot from the clerk, they had to mail the ballot in, it wasn't simply going up to a voting booth and voting. So it took some effort on their part for them to show up and do the vote. And I think for that reason, we need to recognize that they made that effort as citizens to voice their opinion on this situation.
Good point, I agree with you. Alderman Kesslerly?
Yeah, the only comment I have is that I saw that our sidewalks are done there on Pinkney, and that looks very nice, 'cause those are pretty hazardous sidewalks, so.
On Pink, where at? I'm not sure if I, I know where Pinkney is.
Waters, not Water, Pinkney, yeah, between the high school and up Truesdale.
Okay.
That stretched by Roy and up to the high school.
Okay.
They were really uneven, that was one of our projects, and they finally got it in with the crazy weather, they got those done.
Now we need the other end from the high school entry on further south.
Yes, and a lot of other places.
Soon as we figure out where to get the money, too. Anything else?
No, that's all.
Alderman Cornell?
Nothing for me.
Alderman Flake?
Yeah, April 8th will be election, be next Tuesday, and I just hope that all the registered voters in the city get out, exercise their right, and go to the polls and vote.
Is he a write-in candidate?
Alderman Dryer?
I got none.
Well, Alderman Flake stole my thunder, I was gonna talk about the election also, and just remind the voters to come out and vote. There's a lot of things on the ballot, take the time to read all the ballots. Of course, being with the city, we're pushing the bond issue that we have on our wastewater program, that this, if this passes, this will enable us to borrow money at a much less rate than what we'd have to do on the open market. So that would be very helpful, it's a non-taxing issue, and we hope we get voters' approval on that, so. And that's all I have. I'm gonna move on down to item 7, renewal of Greater Warren County Economic Development Council agreement and payment. And I see Mr. Beck here. Do you wanna address us on that issue?
That's all right.
We'd love to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Aldermen. It's my great honor to be here tonight on behalf of the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council to thank you for your support and participation in our organization and our effort, and to hopefully fill you in on a little bit about the activities of the EDC over the past year or so. Hopefully everybody's received a copy of our most recent annual report. I've got hard copies here with us tonight, but those should've been mailed to the city before, and I believe I sent some electronic copies earlier. If you didn't receive those, we'll make sure you get them by the end of tonight. I also have with me a copy of a status report that we're gonna begin sending as an EDC on a more regular basis to keep our cities and our other investors more updated on the activities and on our project pipeline. So I have that with me tonight, so I'm happy to share. But I thought that I really could've sort of flipped through the annual report, tell you some of the activities of the group, and then turn it over to see if you have any questions for me. But as you go through the report, the first thing that we have on the back of the cover page is something that I think we're probably most proud of. And that is, if you recall, when we first came to you talking about the concept of the Greater Warren County EDC, we said we wanted this to be a collaborative effort, we wanted it to be a cooperation amongst not only our multiple communities that call this region home, but also both the public and the private sector. And I think we've made great strides as an organization to accomplish that goal. We have five local communities and governments, two school districts, three chambers of commerce, and over 60 businesses that contribute to and participate in the Greater Warren County EDC. And we know that that's where a lot of our strength comes from, that the community takes so much ownership in the economic development of this area, and we're very grateful for that. We have two key missions as an Economic Development Council, that is to, one, support our existing business community. And we outline in the annual report some of our steps down that path. We provided networking opportunities to area business leaders and government leaders to hopefully open those lines of communication between the two groups. We provided training opportunities to both, to our governments and, I'm sorry, to our area business community for things like HR managers that came together with us and learned about resources available to them at the state and national level to help them with hiring and incentives. And we've also offered project management support to any company here in this area that was competing for a expansion project or potentially a threat of relocation. A couple of those projects have been successful, they usually don't get as many headlines as some of the large new business attraction projects, but an example right here in Warrenton with the SAF Howland project, that was an expansion won by Warrenton over competing locations really worldwide. And I especially wanna thank Mayor Dyer for his participation in that and helping to secure that investment for this area, working with the management team early on to help us win that project. Our second key mission is again to market the area for new business attraction and to offer those project management services to new companies moving in. And as you know, one of our key projects over this past year was the CertainTeed project, which was searching multiple states, over 30 sites on the initial shortlist, and ended up choosing our region right here near your backyard that's gonna bring a tremendous amount of new capital investment and new jobs to this area. We're very, very proud of that project, along with projects like HT Hackney and the marketing effort Access STL West that we're partnering with Montgomery County is generating many more of those types of projects in our pipeline. Currently, and this will be on those reports that you receive on a regular basis, we have 19 active projects in our pipeline. Just in this past month, we've hosted two company teams that have shortlisted this area, asked potential locations, we hosted those company teams for visits, tours of our community, presentations on the workforce, tours of the real estate, et cetera. We've also met, gone through outreach to meet with a company that has shortlisted us in addition to that, and we've sent four new proposals to new companies. We don't consider them an active project on that 19 list until we've made it through at least one round of cuts. We've proactively sent out four new proposals in this area. So our 2014 is really beginning very, very quickly. I think great things are in store, and again, much of that is because of the support that we receive from the business community, but also from our government. So thank you for that, we hope to have you as a continued partner, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions for the board?
Besides, besides a CertainTeed plant, do we have anything in progress or coming to this area here in the around Warrenton area?
Sure, so we have 19 active projects right now. In that pipeline, 647 jobs that we're competing for that we know, not all those projects are telling us how many jobs are being considered. Of course, we're not expecting to win all of those projects, but that's a great pipeline that we think we're competing for. Some of those projects are looking at Warrenton, but again, our approach is we look at the region. We know that the workforce flows throughout our different cities, we know that those paychecks flow throughout our different cities and throughout the region as a whole, so we're trying to uplift the region as a whole. So we really consider ourselves, and we ask everyone that comes to our board meetings, again, put the cities aside, we're here as one region to represent this area as our local economy is sort of blind to the city limit lines and county limit lines even, so we really approach ourselves to the region. And I think we have a very strong and very active pipeline at this time. I think the one thing we're proud of as a group, sorry, Mr. Mayor, is that if you remember, it really was only a couple of years ago that this was an idea. And so I think the group put a lot of time and effort into planning, proper planning of the organization to make sure resources were spent properly, but not a second more. We really progressed very quickly past the infrastructure building phase of the organization, the process development stage, and right into managing projects. So to have something like CertainTeed, like HT Hackney, like SAF Howland within the first, first annual report of the organization is something I think we should be very proud of, and the pipeline that we have of companies working right now.
Pretty remarkable that you can accomplish that in the short time that you have been operating. On the SAF Howland, are you at liberty to discuss how many jobs that created?
We're working with the company right now to get a press release out, actually hoping to do an event in the near future, and so I'll let them speak to that if that's all right, I don't wanna steal their funds, but.
I know you've been working on that a long time, and they haven't been as quick to respond as we'd like for them to, but that's understandable.
Not quick to respond on the press release, but quick to respond on the hiring. So it's been great jobs coming to the area, and that's the important part, right? So new investment, new jobs coming to the community. Part of that project, a couple of projects I'm kinda remiss in not talking about, one thing that was important to them was a couple of efforts to support the existing business community. Specifically, I'm talking about through the development of a local-based welding certificate training program right here in this community. We have a lot of companies that are looking at the area, that are looking for certified welders, trained welders, and we found that our existing business community was also looking for certified welders. And that was a draw for this project. Our workforce, as you remember, Mr. Mayor, was the number one selling point of this region over competing locations. And so we, as the EDC, are taking the charge and trying to work with St. Charles Community College, East Central College, and actually have a certification offering right here in Warren County, we're partnering with our schools to bring that to area residents, to help them fill the need for our existing employers. We're also working on some intermodal projects, we're beginning to take our step into entrepreneurship and growing our own. We've sponsored students, this will be our second year in a row now that we've sponsored students to attend a Build a Business Summer Camp at the University of Missouri, where they spend a week of their summer at University of Missouri's campus, learning from other entrepreneurs, learning how to write a business plan, actually pitching a business idea as a capstone project. We believe that there's great economic dividends that'll be produced by encouraging our youth, encouraging our students to think about entrepreneurship as a career path, and think about coming home after they leave or directly out of high school and starting a business in this community, and we're gonna continue to support that program.
Great. Any questions on this side, to Josh? Alderman Ock?
Nope.
Alderman Kesslerly? Everybody good on this side?
Fine, thank you.
We thank you. We thank you for your work and the support, and hope we can continue to partnership with you, and great things are in the future.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Josh, I just wanna catch you really quick, I do have one comment.
Okay.
And that's on the contract, Josh, and this was something that was brought to my attention in an agreement that we did with the school district that I did not know was a provision, but it is a provision. There's a hold harmless, where the city holds you guys harmless, that there's an attorney general opinion that says a government entity cannot hold someone else harmless, 'cause it's a waiver of sovereign immunity. We've eliminated that out of it, so it's in legal compliance, so, and it's just, I learned it from the school district's attorney, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Probably a couple months ago, and we've eliminated it from all our contracts, so we made that change in there, so if there's a problem, you have my email address, just let me know, and you can try to work something else out about that provision.
I appreciate, thanks for that, sir.
All right, thank you. And we don't really, we're not taking any action on this because we have an ordinance at the Yon, so no one needs to vote on that. I'm on item 8, Paint the Town Purple, I'm interested in hearing about that, and I'm looking for Kana Rook. Did I pronounce that right?
It's Kana.
Kana, would you come forward to the podium and tell us what that's about?
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Kana Rook with the American Cancer Society, and I work specifically with the Relay for Life of Warren County, which I'm sure many of you know about it, heard about it, probably attended. It's a great fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, and what we are pushing for tonight is Paint the Town Purple. And I do five other Relay for Life events, one in Montgomery City, Fulton, Mexico, and Troy are the other four that I do, and they have all done this successfully, and so just trying to get the city's support if possible. We've already talked to the Warren County Administration and gonna get their building to decorate their windows in the health department lower level, and basically just wanting to paint the town purple for the week before our relay. Our relay is Friday, first Friday of June, as always, so it's June 6 this year, it goes from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM at Blackhawk Middle School, and then we're wanting that week before basically to cover the town of Warrenton and hopefully even outside of Warrenton, Warren County, in purple, and let people know about what's going on with the Relay for Life. And we typically have upwards of 500 people come out to the relay, so it's a big draw for the county, and I know of, you know, since I work with so many other relays, of other people from outside in Montgomery County or, you know, Calaway County that come to Warrenton's relay because you guys have amazing food. And the Catalmans Association makes delicious sandwiches, so it is a big draw to your community. So we really wanna promote it within the city to get, you know, people of Warrenton to come to the relay. I guess that we got the Warren County Administration to be on board with us, I believe that Telaya, who was supposed to be here to speak tonight, was going to talk to the courthouse also and see if we can wrap the columns in purple ribbon. And we're also gonna try and talk to local businesses to see if they will help promote and do a, you know, window decorating contest or something along those lines. So also wondering, you know, if the city would be willing to help us out with that. Of course, we would do all the decorating, the cleanup, and things like that, and then I know that there are some ordinances against, you know, wrapping streetlight poles or putting signs out, track signs kind of thing, so I just wasn't sure what all we needed to get official approval on, but just wanted to see what we could do.
Well, the businesses are owned individually, so you would have to contact those people. I don't think Brad wants our trees wrapped, that we're kinda protective of our.
Sure.
Our trees, and I don't know about the streetlights, do we have any issues with them wrapping them in purple or anything? Does anyone know about that?
We may have an issue with paint.
Well, you're not gonna paint it.
Oh, no, we wanna, we wanna paint it, no.
We're putting tape on it.
Oh, the tape?
Oh, tape, okay.
When is the Relay for Life?
So.
June 6.
I would check with Brad before I put anything on.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and you guys, if you wanted, we could do a real simple resolution supporting it, and you guys could give permission for them to do it.
And Brad might have a way to do it without putting tape on it.
Without putting tape or something. So you're asking for us to give our support to you and participate?
Yes.
Any board members have feelings on this?
I think we should absolutely participate, I think that it's a way for the city to become involved with the community, so.
Alderman Dryer?
Sounds great to me.
Alderman Flake?
I don't know.
How about this side?
Well, I was gonna suggest that if the June City Council made the mayor get body painted between his face. Go out on the TV and it'll be nice. His wife is smiling, nodding.
And she's wearing purple, she's wearing purple.
She is wearing purple.
You know what? But that's just one man, what about the entire board of Aldermen?
If the mayor goes that direction.
The entire board, don't they call them the first? You're not gonna be here. Oh, if you're painting your hair purple, I'll be here. I'll be sitting here, but I'll be here.
I think what I'm hearing is we would very much support your issues there, and as Counselor Gravell said, maybe we could do a resolution, you know, given you our support on that.
Okay.
Then somebody should contact, probably Brad Boosie Cruz about.
Yeah, I will, Terry will take care of that, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right, we thank you for coming. Item number nine, approval for destruction of records. Who's in charge of that?
Like, I can't hear that. When we were bringing the records down, getting ready for the shredder truck to come in, we found more records.
More records?
Yeah, more records. So in order to get more stuff out, this is older stuff that we found that can be destroyed too, so with approval, 'cause I think the shredder truck is going to be here on Friday.
Okay, so you need a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Cornell to give approval for destruction of records. Any discussion or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise? Motion carried six zero. All right, I'm at item 10, Mr. Hamp, zoning and building commissioner. What do you got for us?
It's a specialty permit application, SCP number five, for the Warrenton ban boosters mud bog to be held at Warren County Fairgrounds on May the 10th, 2014. This item was tabled at the March 18, 2014 Board of Aldermen meeting. The applicant on March 21st submitted revised applications and drawings, which are in your packet. On the 24th, I went out on site and took additional pictures showing the safety items in place to help you guys make your decision on the approval.
What's your recommendation?
I think that she's updated her drawing as requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with the concrete barriers and the guardrail and the fencing out there, it should be safe.
Make, I'd make a motion to approve the special event for the Warrenton ban boosters mud bog to be held at the fairgrounds on May 10, 2014.
Is it May or September?
May.
May.
I'll second it.
May 10. Okay, motion on the table from Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the mud bog application on May 10, 2014. Any discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
When can you start?
I believe two weeks, it'll be two weeks.
Two weeks.
Marcia had to give birth, so it's two weeks.
I'm on item 12, Director of Operations and Finance Officer Terry Thorne. What have you got?
My first item for you this evening is the results of the reviews of the comprehensive master plans that were submitted in response to the RFP. There were five companies who submitted qualifications, and the group of five individuals who went through this stack of books and did ratings, I think you have their rating sheets in front of you. The top two candidates that came out of that were Striler Planning, and I think their title is Vario, I'm not sure that's the right pronunciation, but they were the top two candidates, and I think what we had talked about before was scheduling interviews with the full board with those top two candidates. So my question for all of you is when you would like to schedule having those two companies in so that you can visit with them about their qualifications?
Well, we, my concern is to do it after we reorganize the new board, which will be, what, the next meeting here in April. How soon are you wanting to do the interview process?
It is absolutely up to you. We've completed everything that staff needs to do at this point until you all make a decision on which company to move forward with. So, you know, I can work with them to set it up anytime that you want to move that forward.
What's the feeling of the board members?
Wait till, that needs to be a decision made by the new board.
New board?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
When can she start?
Um, I believe two weeks. It'll be two weeks.
Two weeks.
Marcia had to give birth on the 2nd.
I'm on item 12, Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne. What have you got?
My first item for you this evening is the results of the reviews of the comprehensive master plans that were submitted in response to the RFP. There were five companies who submitted qualifications and the group of five individuals who went through this stack of books and did ratings. I think you have their rating sheets in front of you. The top two candidates that came out of that were Striler Planning and I think their title is Vario. I'm not sure that's the right pronunciation. But they were the top two candidates and I think what we had talked about before was scheduling interviews with the full board with those top two candidates. So my question for all of you is when you would like to schedule having those two companies in so that you can visit with them about their qualifications?
Well, we, we, my concern is to do it after we reorganize the new board, which will be, what, the next meeting here in April. How soon are you wanting to do the interview process?
It is absolutely up to you. We've completed everything that staff needs to do at this point until you all make a decision on which company to move forward with. So, you know, I can work with them to set it up anytime that you want to move that forward.
What's the feeling of the board members?
Wait till, that needs to be a decision made by the new board.
New board? You feel that way for it?
Yeah.
Okay, is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think they're just getting out of work. I see what it's all about, but yeah, that's fine.
How about Alderman Ock? Are y'all all right with that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, we'll wait until we reorganize the new board and then we'll set, let them pick and choose instead of time.
That's good.
And, uh, and you're, and we're just going to do two companies, the top two companies?
That's what we had originally talked about.
That's what I thought too. Okay.
We'll put that on hold. I actually will get in touch with them and let them know that we're not ignoring it, but we're in the reorganization process and that we'll be back in touch.
Okay.
Uh, my second item for you this evening is the JW Terrell Benefit Services Agreement. This is the company that was chosen to administer our employee benefits insurance programs moving forward. Um, a couple of the things that had been requested to make sure we included in the contract, one of those was to make sure that the current bonuses and compensation remained with Tri-County Agency through the end of the current policy period, which is the end of May. And they did include that in here. Our city attorneys reviewed this agreement and doesn't have any issue with anything that's here. So, um, the request is to have approval for the mayor to sign the agreement with JW Terrell Benefit Services.
I think there's a typo.
Okay.
Period of agreement. This agreement will automatically for three successive years, terms, I shouldn't say automatically renew.
Or are you? Unless otherwise canceled. I think it's in the back.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure where it is in the document. Halfway down through the document somewhere.
There's a word missing, I think.
Yeah, automatically renewed.
Good catch.
Would you like it to be the terming now?
Well, I can't catch every grammar.
Well, yeah.
But this is also a, a ordinance later, so we don't take action now.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? What else you got, Terry?
Um, the only other thing I have is just to let you know that I believe tomorrow, um, the last piece of educational material on the bond issue will go to the post office. It's a, I would call it large format postcard, so it's much bigger than a regular postcard. Um, and will be delivered somewhere between tomorrow and the end of the week. And just to explain, I think there were some questions generated by the last mailing because there were pieces of the informational material that went outside the city limits. The post office has a service available to distribute, and I call, I think they call it door-to-door marketing. And so by utilizing the established post office routes, it is much less expensive than even for us to use our bulk mailing permit and to submit those pieces of material to all of the recipients of mail in the city. So even with, and Brady looked at this very closely, even with including the printing of a few additional pieces of the material, it still costs several hundred dollars less to do it that way than it was to use our bulk mailing permit and do it. So, um, I know there were some questions raised by that, but it was simply the cheapest way to get the information out to all the residents in the city.
We probably all had calls from people saying,
I'm sure that's the case.
Why am I getting this piece of mail? I don't live here or live there or whatever.
Right.
So, yeah, it's good that, that we explain that to them.
But the next mailer will go out tomorrow and I would say be delivered, I would hope, by Friday.
By Friday.
To everyone.
Good.
And that's all I have for you.
That's it. We thank you. I'm going to Dottie Phillips, the recreational director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the first item that I have is the monthly report. And this is just the pretty common information that's here. There's update on youth baseball and softball with our numbers, um, with late registrations. We actually ended up with only a drop of 29 in comparison to, I think, the last report showed about 150. And other than that, there's really nothing to point out here.
Well, I think it's important that we point out to the public that in the report, it talks about the farmer's market. Will begin on Tuesdays from 3:30 to 6:30, beginning May 20th. I think we need to get that word out to the public so we can get participation from the beginning. That would be my only comment about the report. And I don't know what the city is going to do to help promote that, but, um, I think we definitely need to promote.
But on the youth, youth baseball and softball, it says we have, we have 322 kids registered. You have any rhyme or reason why we would be down over last year?
Well, one of the changes that we've made over the last two years, in the past, they allowed three-year-olds to play T-ball.
Okay.
And that is just too young.
Too young.
Um, so we have kind of, over the last two years, sort of dropped off in age so that we could get to where they're starting at five years old. So I would say some of it is, is that.
Okay.
And then also, you know, we, we did make a pretty big change this year by, by switching to a new league. So we may have lost some people because of that. I'm actually really not, um, I don't find this to be alarming. I, you know, I think that it's okay considering the changes that we've made.
Can I go back to the market again? Last year, we talked about the need to have, one of the costs of the market was to have a full-time employee sitting there while the market was open. And is that the plan this year, too? Or are we just going to?
No, if, if you recall, we've, we've since turned the farmer's market over to the, the county, the Warren County Farmer's Market.
So we're going to allow them then to police it, basically?
Right.
All right.
We'll be coordinating with them to make sure they have keys so they can get into the bathrooms and, you know, assisting them in whatever ways that we can. But, yeah, we won't be, we will not be providing an employee there for the whole day.
Did you want to mention your upcoming programs in April since it's short notice now? Haven't seen a lot of advertisement out there.
Sure. Um, the Hunter Safety Course is April 5th. I believe that class is actually full. There was only a couple of spots left last week, so. Uh, the Easter Icon is April 12th out at the Athletic Complex. It starts at 11:00 AM. It's free and it's open for ages one to 10. Major League Baseball Pitch Hit and Run Program is April 15th. That is also a free program. The deadline for adult softball leagues is April 4th and games are scheduled to begin on April 27th. Right now, we have two teams registered for co-rec and two for men's. So hopefully this week we'll get some more, otherwise we won't be able to do a league with just two teams in each. Then the May activities are listed. The movie night, Yogi Bear will be showed, um, at Dyer Park. Hershey Track and Field is May 31st. That's another free program that's offered through, uh, National Recreation Park Association. Uh, basically, we just provide a staff person there to run the event, but all the equipment and supplies are provided by them. And then the pool will be opening on May 24th.
Are we, what are the pool hours going to be this year?
They are noon to seven daily.
Is that different than last year?
Yes, sir, it is.
We changed it.
I'm not sure, I don't remember what the date was, but it was discussed and then approved at one of the board meetings.
Pre, pre me or?
No, no.
Couple months ago, maybe?
Yeah, in a meeting.
Well, what?
I didn't change it.
What were the previous hours? I didn't see them.
Um, they were noon to eight.
And we, we talked about changing it because we just weren't getting enough attendance for that last hour? Is that what it was?
Yes, it was the, the last, I, I think that on the weekends, it was noon to nine. Um, and then noon to eight Monday through Thursday. I can't, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't really remember what they were. But anyway, yeah, we had low attendance in the, the last, you know, those late hours. Usually by seven o'clock, we were seeing pretty much everybody gone.
Is there going to be longer hours throughout the weekend or is it going to be noon to seven all, all the time?
It's noon to seven daily.
What happened to the fishing derby? I don't see that on here. Didn't we sponsor a fishing derby last year?
Yes, but it's not until June.
June, okay, so.
And it is, yes, it is scheduled. I, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I, it's scheduled.
I didn't, didn't want to lose it because I was thinking about entering that myself this year.
We have to wait for the ice to melt.
Oh, so with the ice lace? Okay. Anything else for Dottie?
What's she doing?
Dottie, you have anything else for the board?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I have, uh, not, not regarding the monthly report, no.
Oh, you got all kinds of stuff here. I was going to skip over you. So we're, we're at 13B. You need approval for a, a hire?
Yes, um, Jacob O'Neil is one of two recreation coordinators that we would like to hire, um, at $13 an hour. Jacob is currently completing his Bachelor's of Science in Sport Management. He is also a member of the United States Air Force Reserves. Um, he has some experience in recreation. All of his supervisors who Brandy contacted spoke very highly of him. Um, I think that his previous work experience, he's going to be able to step right in and, and help out. So we're very excited to hopefully get him here and ready to go. So we're requesting approval to hire Jacob O'Neil at $13 an hour as recreation coordinator.
Is Jacob a local person? Does he live here?
Jacob is not local. He is currently living in Baldwin, I believe.
Baldwin.
Um, he is originally from St. Clair, Missouri, I think.
Okay. All right, just curious.
Are these replacing two positions we previously had and were vacated or is this an additional position?
Um, one of these is, one of them is replacing the other rec coordinator who resigned and then we have added a position.
Is the added position the budget?
Um, there's currently a part-time in the budget and the second coordinator is replacing the part-timer. So there will be additional hours.
So this is two full-time people, not a full-time and a part-time?
Yes.
Why are we doing that?
Um, we discussed this at a work session that we had a little while back, um, and talked about, because we've been talking about a tournament director
Mm-hmm.
That we were going to have to hire a position for and decided that rather than hiring the currently budgeted part-time position as well as then this tournament director, that we would roll all of that into another full-time position.
Any other concerns or questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the approval to hire Jacob O'Neil as recreation coordinator for $13 an hour.
Second.
Alderman, or, motion made by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Dreyer to hire Jacob O'Neil as a recreation coordinator at $13 an hour. Any other discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Can I ask, what's the starting pay for a police officer?
Um, is it 17, 1673 and then to 1720 after FTO.
Thank you.
Okay, what, you've got the American Legion agreement?
Yes, sir. Um, you should have the agreement for the use of the athletic fields by the American Legion, as was discussed in the previous meeting. Basically, they will be using the field on the dates that are attached to the agreement. Um, it's 10 dates with two dates set aside for rain dates. They will use them one or two times each night at $20 per game. They will actually also be assisting with paying for the, um, construction of a mound. But the city's staff will actually be building that mound.
How much were they going to pay?
$100 a game.
No, no, for the construction of the mound. It doesn't say that in the agreement, does it?
They are, they have agreed to pay for the, Terry, do you remember what the amount was?
I believe it says time and materials, basically.
Yes, I don't think there was a.
Labor costs, yeah. Materials that we already have and labor costs. I mean, what we typically do if we're concerned about that, Gary, is we'd have a cost not to exceed this much. I'm not sure it's going to be, do you have an estimate?
Um, I, I believe that in discussions with Brad, it, it may take a day, day and a half of labor. Um, and the, the expense shouldn't be too high because we're going to use existing materials. There's, um, some of the dirt that we currently have, we're going to be able to use to do that. We are going to, we have chosen not to build the mound with special material. Um, you can buy like these bricks and different thing, it's, it's more like clay bricks. We've chosen not to do that to keep the cost down and also if we need to take the mound down for some reason, we can do it without, you know, spending a bunch of money and then having to tear it down. So it's going to be minimal.
So it looks like there's 10 games that they may tie up that.
10 dates, up to 20 games.
Oh, up, okay.
Yeah, they may play, some nights they will play two games.
A double hitter type thing?
Yeah.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Flake to approve the hire of Derek Fletcher as a recreational coordinator at $13 an hour. Roll call.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Can I ask, what's the starting pay for a police officer?
Is it 17, 1673 and then to 1720 after FTO?
Thank you.
Okay, well, you've got the American Legion agreement?
Yes, sir. You should have the agreement for the use of the athletic fields by the American Legion as was discussed in the previous meeting. Basically, they will be using the field on the dates that are attached to the agreement. It's 10 dates with two dates set aside for rain dates. They will use them one or two times each night at $20 per game. They will actually also be assisting with paying for the construction of a mound. But the city's staff will actually be building that mound.
How much are they going to pay? No, no, for the construction of the mound, it doesn't say that in the agreement, does it?
They are, they've agreed to pay for the, Terry, do you remember what the-
I believe it says time and materials, basically.
Yes, I don't think there was a-
Labor costs, yeah. Materials that we already have and labor costs. I mean, what we typically do if we're concerned about that, Gary, is we'd have a cost not to exceed this much. I'm not sure it's going to be, do you have an estimate of?
I believe that in discussions with Brad, it may take a day, day and a half of labor. And the expense shouldn't be too high because we're going to use existing materials. Some of the dirt that we currently have, we're going to be able to use to do that. We are going to, we have chosen not to build the mound with special material. You can buy like these bricks and different things. It's more like clay bricks. We've chosen not to do that to keep the cost down, and also if we need to take the mound down for some reason, we can do it without, you know, spending a bunch of money and then having to tear it down. So it's going to be minimal.
So it looks like there's 10 games that they may tie up that-
10 dates, up to 20 games.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they may play, some nights they will play two games.
A double hitter type thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Now, they're not using as much as I thought they originally were going to use it. I thought maybe there would be a lot more games than that. But I guess they travel part of the time.
They travel part of the time, and they also are going to be utilizing the school field some.
Okay.
What do they pay the school?
It is my understanding they do not pay.
These, I know most of the games are on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That doesn't interfere with our programs and our, we have rescheduling rain dates and everything.
No, prior to bringing this up the first time, we actually plotted out what our game needs were going to be for the fields that we have, and we're able to put them on those Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it will not interfere with our ability. That field typically will only be used for the older kids anyway, and we have less teams in those older divisions. So there's not as great of a need for teams to play on that field as what there are the other five.
Well, the older kids in that mound, is the mound, they pitch at all different lengths. Is that mound going to be in the way?
No, the, so the pitching rubbers, actually, first of all, we move the pitching rubbers depending on what distance they need to be for whatever team is playing that night. And we, when we move them, like the kids who pitch at 50 feet or 55 feet, they're going to be on the bottom half of that mound, pitching off of it. It's pretty typical in, you know, any place where you're using a field for multiple ages to construct it that way. So they're still, they're going to get the advantage of pitching off of a mound, but not from the highest point on the mound.
So what you're telling me is they're still getting some experience from being on a mound, that they're not at the peak of the mound?
That's correct.
On the bottom side of it.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the American Legion agreement.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerly, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the American Legion agreement. Any other discussion on that? Alderman Clark, you good?
Good on discussion?
No, good on the mound part of it.
I don't like the mound at all.
I thought you were going to say that.
That was from a previous discussion.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against it. I think it's, we're giving it away. We invest so much money into this, and to charge $20 a game is just, we're not coming anywhere near recouping close to the cost of running that field, running that operation. You just can't look at that one day and that one bit for that one hour the game is and say, that's my only cost. Your cost is far greater than that. You know, and Alderman Kesslerly pointed out the school, well, the school doesn't charge anything. Well, guess what? I'm a taxpayer for the school district, and I don't like that the school district is giving away their resources to, to an entity that has absolutely nothing to do with the school and nothing to do with education. So I'm voting against it.
Okay.
I made the motion.
I know. Do you have any further comments?
No.
Any other comments on that yet?
Well, Dottie, am I correct? They're going to work up the field. They're going to groom the field, they're going to chalk the field. Other than building the mound, they're going to take care of any day of game labor on the field, correct?
They are not going to be grooming the field. We will actually drag the field that day.
Okay.
And typically speaking, that would, you know, if there's no, if it hasn't rained, there's no mud or anything like that, you're talking a half hour at most.
While you're dragging the other three fields.
Correct. But then from there, they will line the diamonds, they'll put their own bases out. When the game is over, they'll come back in, fill their, you know, put the plugs back in the bases, fill the holes in, fill the holes in on the mound, and tamp it. So they are doing that field work.
That's all I have.
Okay, let's see. Alderman Kesslerly made the motion.
Second.
Alderman Cornell seconded. Okay, we'll call the vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
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 Yes.
Motion carried four to two.
Okay.
Get that out of there.
Is that it, Dottie?
Yes, sir.
I'm ready for Michelle, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, how are you? The only thing I have for you this evening is my economic development update.
Did Josh steal any of your thunder?
A lot of it, I think.
I think he covered some of your-
He covered the whole report.
That's fine.
For the grant area.
It looked like it.
I guess that's why she didn't give us copies and we stuck.
No, I actually just received the electronic copy today, so I will be getting you electronic copies of that.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle? We're looking for good things in the future.
Definitely.
Ice cream rail to Westport, that'd be nice.
Nothing for Michelle?
No.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Good on this side?
Good.
All right, we're going to let you go. Thank you. Now Gabrielle's up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item I have is the accounts payable. I am requesting to pay the invoices totaling $161,687.20.
Any questions for Gabrielle?
I'll make a motion to pay the accounts payable for $161,687.20.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $161,687.20. Roll call, please.
Alderman, or Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman-
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
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 Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Okay, the next item I have is the financial report for the month of February. Are there any questions about it?
Sales tax is still up. Keep your fingers crossed.
It's a good month.
We're back up to 5% over budget.
That's because Guy didn't come tonight.
We might have dropped it.
That's sales tax, not expenditures.
No, I'm just kidding.
Any questions on the monthly report for Gabrielle? We're good with that.
All right, that's all I have then. Thank you.
Boy, you let her off easy.
She got through quick, didn't she?
I remember. Got me excited.
Melody, you're up. City Clerk?
Local Government Week is May 5th through May 9th. And this year, I'd like to propose that employees wear sports-themed shirts on Thursday, May 8th, and be an extra jeans day. And then also on that same day, we'd have an employee luncheon at the grounds and maintenance building, and it'd be nice to have all the board there.
You want us to wear purple that day, or just a sport?
Purple?
Yeah, just a team sport.
Well, if there's a sports theme that's purple, I'm sure, feel free to wear purple.
Okay, there are some.
There are some, yeah.
But I don't think you'd be very welcome wearing purple in sports.
Wouldn't be accepted, is what you're saying? Okay. Sounds good. You need any approval for that?
Yes, just yes or no, if you guys are good with that?
Anybody object to that? We're good. We'll all be there.
Awesome.
I don't know about John and Fred, though, but the rest of us will be there.
Yeah.
I will not.
You will not? Okay, I'll cover for you.
Eat my share.
I've got some bills we need to convert to ordinances. First bill is Bill Number 23-14.
Call for it, Fred. We're going to miss him on that call.
We are.
Call for the first reading of Bill Number 23-14.
Go here, second.
Second.
Alderman Clark made a motion for first reading of Bill 23-14, seconded by Alderman Dryer.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement between the City of Lawrence, Missouri and the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council.
Call for a second final reading and passage of Bill Number 23-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 23-14.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement between the City of Lawrence, Missouri and J.W. Tarrell Benefits Services for Insurance Brokerage Services.
Call for a second final reading and passage of Bill Number 24-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 24-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell for second and final reading and passage of Bill Number 24-14.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement between the City of Lawrence, Missouri and J.W. Tarrell Benefits Services for Insurance Brokerage Services.
Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.